All right, everyone, let's begin tonight. Tonight's meeting for the Romeo Planning Commission for March 2nd, 2023. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Cindy, you want to conduct roll call, please?
Stegner.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Hale.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
Grandstaff.
Here.
Minton.
Here.
Justin Parker.
Present.
Bill Parker.
Yo.
Okay, now we move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Anybody have any alterations?
Don't move.
Second, okay, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
And approval of the meeting minutes from February 2nd. Any amendments to suggest?
I had a question regarding like the motions being made. Do we note if there's a second on there or just who made the original motion?
I don't know.
Which one?
For instance, unfinished business.
I mean, are you asking, are we supposed to?
I thought we were supposed to. I just noticed like unfinished business, one motion by Bill Parker to deny so on, but there was no who seconded.
Actually, justice, right, legally, this type of thing is supposed to have it on the second.
Yeah.
I thought you did.
Yeah, I did. But there's no.
For meeting minutes?
Yeah, there's no discussion of or writing.
You mean, are you talking about unfinished, Justin?
Yeah, that's just one, I don't know if this board doesn't note that.
No, this board does.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
And then, yeah, so we need to add in the second for the support.
And you were saying that you supported that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Andrew.
When legal discussions about these matters take place, they go back to that kind of motion and they start there. So we need to document that kind of thing.
All right, so do we have a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
It was from Ms. Trump.
All right, so now we move on to the public forum. Anybody have anything they would like to bring before the commission at this time?
I just wanted to say, I wasn't here to be able to be at your first meeting last time, so I wanted to say thank you to everyone who stepped up and took their appointment. And thank you for your time and I appreciate everything you do for our village.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to new business. All of you have in your packets, site plan for the village park plans. I guess this is just more by way of information of progress, towards progress, what's going on, any comments from anybody, any questions?
Are they looking for planning recommendation to the council to approve these?
I think it's just informational because it's already been approved. We approved the site plan.
Yeah, but we've never, or this board or the council never approved anything further except like the pavilion was never approved because there was no design actually at planning at that time.
What we approved was the footprint. And we said at that time that we approved the site plan as long as the footprint never changes. But we didn't see any designs because there weren't any designs at that point.
Yeah, so I know now we do, we have this proposed gazebo, which would need, my understanding, would need our recommendation to council to approve or not approve based on what we see.
I don't know if that's true or not. Do you recall, Lisa, I think, I thought we approved the project.
We approved the project and we asked them to bring back drawings of the gazebo when they had the renderings, is what we asked.
Okay. Okay, I don't remember that part of it, but we do.
That is what we asked for, but we did, we approved the site plan.
Yes, so we approved the site.
And we asked to see this.
Yes.
When they, when they had them ready and prepared.
I'm a little, I've got some questions and I'm a little concerned about this. This is the first I'm seeing of this. And it, my interpretation of this, it looks like there is brick walls on like three sides. Why, why do we even have that?
I think those are pavers.
I didn't hear.
I think those are brick pavers.
These are brick pavers.
I don't know if those are walls, there was some pillars that went up.
These are just brick pavers.
There's brick pillars, there's a, this looks like a ramp on the backside and it's, I think it's concrete.
Yeah, on the, on the backside getting up to the gazebo.
Yeah, and then there's railing.
And, and.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I, if those are just brick pavers, that's, that's okay, but I interpreted that as like a wall.
You're looking at what's behind the pavilion or along the park sidewalks.
This is a wall. Yeah, there's, we've got a sidewalk here, the alley, but what are these arches here? Are they?
These, these here?
The orange?
The orange arches.
Yeah, or brick pavers.
Paver walk.
Is that all they are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just.
I'll talk.
I, I have some experience being there in December and I thought if they've got walled there with all the people that are there, I see problems and I, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't.
We don't see that.
Yeah, it's called a right there.
As close in there. Well, that was planned. My concern.
Yeah, it's a concrete, we got that.
And so, I mean, some concerns I have with the current work that's already been done are unfinished. Is it spelled out how that's going to be finished? Like some of the approaches that were told were ADA compliant or not, like the curb, the cutouts, you know, aren't wide enough to meet the width of the sidewalks that were poured. And then some of the sidewalks were just stopped before the curbs to the, where the village ties in around the park that would have then had to be ADA compliant also, which I don't think you can just stop pouring a sidewalk at a project this size and not finish those corners or areas of approach. The current sidewalk that was poured doesn't look like it was ever saw cut, which I would think something that ours would want to be saw cut. And then I know we got the engineered letter regarding the pillars, but I'd still like to see maybe three random ones dug out so we can inspect the footings to make sure the footings are deep enough. And then also maybe a concrete bill to show like the PSI of concrete that was used to make sure it meets specs.
There should have been some testing involved in the concrete pour.
Exactly, which that was bypassed, that's why we got this letter from February 21st after the fact. And I'd also maybe look at, see if the village could have the village engineers review everything that's been done and then look at everything further, work that's going to be done before, we just give authorization to move forward to make sure we're all on the up and up and everything is covered. So that the village doesn't end up liable for damage or injury in the future.
Got a real quick question, has anybody checked with Mike Bomarito to see if there was any engineering? Mike's very thorough.
I don't believe there has been, I know Mike's currently out of town.
Yeah.
But. I, we could ask Megan, I'm sure she's had this conversation.
I think it would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Because we did meet.
Okay, perfect.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to let you guys have your meeting without me interjecting. But there were no engineered drawings for those, the pillars. The fence eventually had a permit after the fact. However, Mr. Young, who did the masonry, knowing that a permit wasn't pulled, he did very thorough pictures and documented everything. Which were then shown to Mr. Bomarito, who felt comfortable then saying, okay, this is, there was appropriate rebar or all of, this is technology, whereas I'm not quite up on. But everything was there, I'm sure if you guys want to see them, Mr. Bomarito or Mr. Young will pass them all on. But Bomarito felt quite confident in the structure of them after seeing all of these pictures. The depth of them, literally, there's a picture of a gentleman standing in the hole and, I mean, I'm sure it's a woman and his shoulders were just coming to the top of that hole.
Forty-two inches, yeah, should be like forty-two. And then the other thing would be the, was there anything ever inspected as far as the underground and installation of the electrical?
Electrical was permitted and that did follow along.
With Mr. Dillon.
Yes, yeah, and then at Christmas, I did have, before opening up to everybody, I did have him do a mid-check. I did request that so that currently as we're plugging in lights and doing all of this stuff, I wanted to make sure that to that point, everything did check off and he was very happy with that.
Did Mike or, I don't know if our engineers or anyone look at it, mention anything about the approaches and how they weren't, like some of them, there's the approach and then the curb just runs right into the middle of the new approach, unlike the northeast corner.
Our engineers have not looked at anything that I'm aware of. I mean, this just came about and what was done of the past was what you saw previously, which was a rendering. So our engineers haven't looked at anything as far as I understand. I would, I do have some proposals coming, given our sidewalks and now we have this nice new park and you do see the sidewalks are quite lacking around there, giving our sidewalks budget for this coming year. That might be where we kind of focus some of that to complete the project possibly is an idea.
Would you be willing to ask the village engineers to look at the complete prints and package that they may have for what's going to be done and to complete their end of the project so that we know everything's on the up and up?
So what happens is you guys look at this, you approve this as is, and our engineers then do look at it and adjust or write notes of what would need you guys based off of this. But you guys need to, the question comes to you first. Because our engineer could look at this, spend all the time, do all this work, and then you guys look at this and go, no, 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 we want this changed, we want that indifferent, and now we're doing this all over again and paying those man hours on the other end again. So this comes back to you. Are there any additions?
The only visual thing I saw, it's more maybe a personal preference to fit the downtown and be not a metal roof used on the pavilion and maybe something more like an architectural or dimensional shingle, just something maybe like a shade.
That's nothing for me, that's for you guys.
Even for a metal roof, maybe a copper roof that'll patina over time.
Yeah.
I mean, because just a metal roof, a steel metal roof is going to rust at the edges. You know, it's going to rust at the edges no matter, I'll tell you fifty years, but my experience is it rusts at the edges.
Tree branches fall, it gets chipped.
So, and they, and that's why they've gone to aluminum now, which is really expensive, but aluminum doesn't rust. Well, if we're going to invest in something that's supposed to last and fit our historical aspect of our village, a copper roof that will patina over time would be nice. I mean, I'm not a fan of the brick columns, but I understand for, I mean, you could do hardy board and PVC siding, that'll last just as long as the brick columns. Will it hold up as much as kids, you know, teenagers, probably not.
Skateboards.
You know, stuff like that. I mean, the black railing around it, I can't say, if we're not having seating in there, I can't really see why we need black hand railing going around the pavilion. Because my experience of being in the village is the kids run through that pavilion, you know, they run up one side, they run down the other and, you know, the kids are running through this pavilion. But if we're not having seating, do you necessarily need the railing for a six-inch fall? You don't need guard railing.
Because the entire thing stepped around the outside, right?
Six inches.
The whole thing stepped.
Yeah.
Right.
Because that was my question was as far as, I didn't see on the drawings, I was looking for like footings or foundations on the, on the drawings of like what's, because I, I went out there today and walked the park just so I could get, you know, that feel of it. You know, I'm looking at it's going here, it's on the grass, I get that, but what's, I just look for the footings, foundation, something on these drawings that shows me what do we.
I thought, I mean, if we're supposed to approve off of this, there's no way.
Yes, if we approve the concept, maybe make the suggested changes that we're thinking about, then our engineers can look at the structural aspect of it and give the go ahead.
Right.
I mean, isn't there a plan review in the end, eventually?
This is a plan review.
Right, so if this is the plan review, there's not a lot of information on here.
In order to get that, the permit, right, for the building permit, someone's going to sign up on it.
Mike would have to do the plan review.
Mike would have to do a plan review on all of this.
Right.
As far as permits and the engineers and Mike.
And he's going to ask for that, he's going to say, where's, where's your footings?
Can we do a consent from the aesthetic point and then the rail?
Yeah, I'm just asking what our responsibility is, just because.
It's like it's aesthetics and scope.
I think if we suggest those changes as a board, we can present that to the friends of the village park to make or not make and come back or not come back or move forward with changes. I don't know if that's correct or not.
Can, can we give a consensus that we would prefer to see something besides brick and metal there? I mean, I agree with your comments, I don't, I don't like the brick and I don't like the metal.
Right.
And maybe the, the architectural shingles will only last twenty years, but so what?
Right.
I'm not going to last twenty years, so it doesn't matter.
I do, I do like the copper roof idea.
Well, we hope, we hope to last twenty years, that's why I was going copper, because it'll, it'll patina and it'll kind of fit with the historical.
I think it's a great suggestion.
Within five, six years, it'll have that nice patina on it and it lasts forever.
Yeah, I like that a lot.
That was the DNN building that, that was a copper roof.
The actual copper, make copper.
Yes, it was.
They just found with the metal.
I mean, if we're going to invest something nice for the village, just invest a little bit of something.
Well, someone was supposed to be here tonight, but.
Yeah, that's why I got an email.
But she got sick, real sick, apparently with COVID.
Oh, it's not good.
So, somebody want to make a motion, how do you want to move forward with this?
It's what my only comment would be like, for the brick, I think the purpose was, as the drawing says, is to match the columns they already built. So it would be to match as a whole project match, so they already built columns with said brick and I'm sure they already have the brick to finish those ones as well. That's just, I'm guessing, but I think it's for cohesiveness.
Exactly.
Yeah, I get that.
But I understand, but I know I like the roofing idea, but.
Get rid of the metal rail and copper roof.
I've always been a fan of brick because it lasts and I feel like hardy board just gets smashed by the first kid with a baseball in the winter.
I, I think you need some sort of railing up there.
Because the steps continuous around the whole thing, right? So anywhere you, you have to have an opening, it's going to be a step.
Yeah, it's a six-inch opening, it's a ramp on the other side. I, I don't know why it needs to be six inches, it could be two inches.
Yeah.
Yeah. If that would help eliminate the railing, I, you know, the railing is going to match the fencing, right? But again, the fencing is another source object, I'm sure for a lot of people too. But I get the understanding that you're going to have the kids parked there eventually is the idea and you want to, you know, maybe crowd the little kids a little bit. I understand that, keep them from going out into the street.
Well, as long as everything meets code, we can make all the aesthetic suggestions we want. It's up to them whether they want to, you know.
Well, it'd be up to the council to approve the plan because this is ultimately the village's.
I just got a message from Ruth and she said, we do plan on a copper roof, it is part of the three options offered for the roofing. And there are three options for railings as well.
Okay.
Guarantee a copper roof?
You know, I'm good with that. See any other issues? And Bob Marito will do the full scope plan review?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so then have an engineering looking at what's moving forward and then also I'd like them to look at what's already been done to make sure we're on point with what else we might need to step into to cover as the village. If it's approaches, ADA approaches with the, whatever the rumble strips are or whatever that, whatever they're called. There's a lot of additional work that I don't see painted out in these drawings that are going to need to be done to bring it up to, to code.
All right then, so we don't have any motion, we just want to, we don't want to kick this around for the rest of the evening, so you want a table discussion on this until next month? I don't really want to do that. I'd like to see this move forward with, you know.
Do they, do they have a planned start date?
Well, I think with spring coming up, yeah, they would like to, you know, get going as quickly as possible.
I need a motion from us.
It had a finish date of April, like that one, but that was. So I think whatever you guys can do should.
I wouldn't, personally wouldn't mind tabling until we could have a representative from the committee here to maybe define this a little more or.
Well, most of what you said.
Well, you have to make a motion to table or we have to make a motion to move it forward to the village council.
You can do whatever, either one, whatever one you want to do.
I don't agree with you on this one, Justin, but I would move it forward.
I could agree with that.
I would think we should refer to the village and make a motion to refer, is that what I need to say, I need to make a motion to refer to the village council, Cindy?
Based on?
Based on the assurances that we're going to have a copper roof and I'm not sure about the railing, but somebody will be making a decision on that, we all know it's going to be there.
It'll be, so we presented the council then to make the final decision.
Right.
Can I ask the chair, could I ask our planner a question? Do site plans go to village council?
Well, this is a public park, right?
Yeah.
And this is a public project, correct? So I'm good, the village council can make a decision.
So did you make a motion? I made a motion, is somebody going to second it?
I'll support your motion.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, do we want to do a roll call on this? No, we don't need a roll call. All in favor of the motion to move this project to council, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No opposition, so motion carries. Wow, okay. So next business, mixed, mixed-use district discussion with Ms. Miz Rivera.
So at the last planning commission meeting, we decided to start exploring the development of a mixed-use district in the village of Romeo. Based on your master plan, it looks like the mixed-use district is a combination of the current CBD and the office district. We're starting addressing first the office district area. That seems to be the area that's the transition from residential to the CBD. And, you know, the mixed-use district would make this area allow more opportunities for development there, but also we do want to keep the character of the current office district. So what I did was I basically made a chart showing just the, the district language for both the CBD, the office, and then I basically drafted some, just some proposed language for the mixed-use district, just to get you thinking about what it could be. Considering what might be appropriate in this area, what would not. So I don't know if we want to go through section by section or do you guys want to make initial comments or questions?
Anybody?
No. I, I have some questions. Last time we had a proposed rezoning and there was what, we didn't seem to have a site plan, at least not what I understand to have a site plan. Is there some reference needed here so that people understand they're going to be meeting new or meeting the zoning requirements like fencing and controlling the drainage off their property? Should they be paving their, their backyards for parking? I mean, I literally had, in the fifty years I went in the real estate business, I had never seen a presentation that didn't have a site plan. And since we're talking about, I, I don't think there's many, what, three or four owner occupied properties down there? Justin, you would know far more than I do and I'm quite serious about that. Everything else is, is actually held for, for profit purposes. I mean, the people have taken somewhat dilapidated multifamily units and really gussied them up and they're getting, of course, decent rents on. If, if we're talking about them going to a higher commercial usage, like a tea house or a bookstore, and there was a bookstore on South Main several years ago. I'm not sure too many people remember that, but there, there was a children's bookstore, there wasn't there, Cindy? Do you remember that? So, but I guess I'm concerned that I, I'm not catching any language that, that people understand that even if we give them this use, they're, they're going to have significant site improvement efforts there. And I didn't see that last time and I'm kind of curious about that. I, I know that Lisa's directly involved with other communities and there, aren't you, Lisa? And their site plans and have, have you ever seen that presentation like we saw?
Like the one for the tea house?
The one eighty, one eighty South Main.
Well, the communities that I've worked in, you're required to have those things before you pitch to the planning commission and you have pre-planning and everything is, yep.
That's, that's where I'm going, and I don't, I don't quite understand how we got to the situation we got to last time. And since we're talking about taking an area, I would guess half of the area right now is held in multifamily, just because that's the way it's happened. That's neither good nor bad nor a difference, people bought them, they, and it's allowable use. If we're going to go to a more commercial use, then you're going to start looking at basically the walls required between a standard commercial parking lot, which that's what you do. You, you, you just can't put a, a commercial business in and then not have a, some type of divider. It's a standard in, in the trade and in, I don't, I understand we're talking about just this and not really the site plan, but I. Your comments?
I mean, it, it varies from community to community. I mean, it's really, it's really up to the applicant to provide all this, you know, the necessary stuff to make, you know, a full review so that the commission can make a sound decision. I think a lot of times there's confusion maybe on the applicant's end on what exactly that needs to be. I'm sure the office is, I mean, I've seen the application, to me, the applications are extremely straightforward, that's being handed out. The only thing I could think of maybe is some communities have recently started to adopt basically develop, little development informational pages or books and giving graphic examples so applicants actually see, oh, I need this amount of detail. Because, I mean, I've worked in some communities where, you know, people just sketch something on loose leaf and turn it in, that's considered okay and that's okay with that community. Other communities, they want something more detailed, they want the survey, they want all that, which is, you know, good too. So, you know, that could be a pro, an approach where when people get an application, we can tell them, hey, by the way, you know, look at this additional information so you can understand exactly what you're expected to provide so that the village can make a proper decision.
Okay.
That's, that's something that the village could consider, they might, they might want to do. More communities are starting to, they're, they're usually called development handbooks.
Right.
And they're meant for the public so they can see, oh, this is what I need to turn in.
I guess I, my concern level is that just because we, let's say we had passed that, that, or recommended that rezoning last time. I guess I, my, my concern level is that just because we, let's say we, we had passed that, that, or recommended that rezoning last time, would those people understand, okay, now that you're, you have this new heavy grade commercial zoning, you're gonna be meeting a whole bunch of things that you might not have even have thought were there, which could impact their decision even to, to start the project. I mean, if, if you do understand, no, you can't throw concrete or you can't throw asphalt in the backyard and call it, call it a game. There's in a community in McComb County or, or Lapeer or Oakland or whatever that you're gonna do that. You're, you're going to provide some way of controlling the water runoff, it's, that's just the way it's done. And you're gonna have a fence to, to separate you from the residential. And I don't know that, that that information is getting out there and I wanna make sure it did.
I mean, that's something, that's something we could look into more. Um, but to basically just referring to this, this is basically just, this is what's in your ordinance. So the language for the CBD on the left-hand side, that covers all CBD. If you go, now, you know, there is other developmental sections and obviously the development of a new and different district is going to affect those by figure. If we can start thinking about, do we wanna actually make a mixed use district? Or do we wanna modify just the office district to allow more opportunities based on the vision of the master plan? If we do wanna make this mixed use district, what exactly do we want as permitted uses? What do we want as special land uses? Um, it sounds like we wanna keep the character, so, you know, adopting the same standards for building setbacks that we do for office district in this new district. Guess I'm trying to feel which way does the planning commission wanna go? You know, this is gonna take time to develop and figure out exactly, but, um, you know.
We could just expand the use level in the office district?
You, you could do, I mean, you could, yeah, we could keep expanding that, cause I mean technically, this mixed use district according to your master plan covers both, you know, CBD and office. It sounds like right now we just wanna focus on what can we do in the office district to allow for development and still keep the character of the area. Am I, am I right?
Yes. Some of the proposed uses, even in the, the mixed use are already currently in our office district now.
Okay.
We have a florist, we have a barber.
Okay, cause they're not, they're not listed in the ordinance right now, so I'm just saying, we can add them in.
Yeah, some of it has been approved or allowed at some point.
Well, we have dog roamers and two of them because they're, they're hair salons and it's essentially a beauty salon.
Dairy queen. Gas station.
Gas station. But those are. Do we wanna continue with those?
Those are heavy duty commercial, and I think they were, they were the result of rezonings.
Yeah.
Maybe. Or they just have existed that way for a very long time and they're allowed to happen.
Yeah.
The gas station was a result of.
I mean, incredibly dilapidated, two family, it was very historically architecturally interesting, but it was manifested. And it came down, I mean, that's, it was deemed, that was what was gonna happen all those years ago.
All right, so what do we wanna do here? Do we wanna form a subcommittee work group to talk about this and make recommendations? Or, or what would you like to do?
I would expand the uses in the office district and forget about it. And you asked my opinion, now, now shut up for the next five minutes.
After all.
I mean, your master plan, it says, you know, this is a mixed use district, but I mean, I mean, you can interpret it how you want, you can adopt a new district or you can just, you know, it'll just be known like, oh yeah, you know, CBD in this office area. These are, you know, it's a mixed use area, there's a mix of retail, commercial, you know, residential, and it's, you know.
Essentially then we would be getting rid of office and replacing it with mixed use.
You could, or you could, I mean, you can always, you can still keep office.
Slash mixed.
And just make it a little bit more mixed, make it a little bit more flexible, allow for more opportunities there. I mean, not which way.
If we didn't define mixed use or eliminate it from our master plan moving forward, this might not be the same people at this table or even at the council, say ten years. And they may be looking at, oh yeah, we don't have a mixed use, but it's in our master plan. So either we've gotta strike it from there or include it in.
Could be office, like mixed office use or office and mixed use district.
Yeah. Just, just so it's defined, so that this doesn't come back up again with, when you said, well, you're not, you're in twenty years and the shingles rot. You know, someone else is gonna be looking, doing the same thing.
You're right.
So I guess, you're suggesting either subcommittee to work that out or table and we can.
Go with Mr. Parker and just call it.
I, I said I'd keep going for five minutes and I've got, you know, four and a half to go.
No, we don't wanna be here.
I don't know if Parker's gonna talk so much. It's in their nature.
Okay, well, you know, I mean, we seem stuck here, so.
Why, can we, can we, since, can we consider office and mixed use together?
Yeah, yeah, and then, you know, further down the line, if we decide, you know, we need to go a different approach, we can, but I think, you know, we need to start talking about what, what uses should be permitted, what should be special land uses? Should we consider any physical characteristic changes aside from what's already in the office district? Whether we wanna consider parking setbacks, you know, stuff like that.
Could have, we've already done that in there. And I thought, maybe I missed, maybe I missed something. We, we've got.
The setbacks are pretty similar in the office to the mixed use.
They're, they're, they're the same, I just copied it.
The setbacks, screening all those things, essentially what you're saying is we remain the same and we just expand the amount of uses allowed in the office district or just call it office mixed.
We can do that next month or six months.
Okay.
As long as we're not doing it to accompany one individual person coming in, if we've already had that determined beforehand.
I, I think we're debating semantics here and it's, we're in agreement that office and mixed use are essentially the same thing.
So I guess can I make a motion to include the language of mixed use in with our office district zoning?
I have a question.
Just so we can add office slash mixed use into that, so it encompasses the language in our master plan.
Well, I have a question, if we're, if we're gonna be adjoining these two.
Now, now putting the two categories together just to add the.
The extra uses. So if we're adding the extra uses for mixed into the office, so.
Not even adding the uses, I just wanna include the language, office district slash mixed use in that second category, and we can eliminate the mixed use proposed draft for now and then add in what we want to moving forward.
Yeah, cause my, cause you have, like in the mixed use language, it's cafes closing at six, barber shops, salons closing at six, so we're gonna tell some businesses they have to close at six and some businesses can stay open later if we. Depending where they're sitting at. Yeah, depending on, and if, you know, if we're combining the languages or moving this language over.
I'm gonna, I'm not trying to, I don't wanna include anything.
Right.
In this category at all, I just wanna, in the title, add mixed use to the office district. So we have a mixed use district, but it only encompasses what is currently in the office district. If that makes sense.
So you're just trying to take. Well, that's what I'm getting.
I understand what you mean. Changing the title.
You're combining the titles, but then if we take some of this language and move it over.
Yeah, which we don't have to do that now.
Which we don't have to, but then if we, if we don't separate it and we have standards for office district and we have standards for mixed use, it's one thing. But if we move office district and then say this tea room and stuff comes in, are we gonna tell them, you have to close at six, even though you're a door down from.
Yeah.
The real estate agent who can stay open till nine.
Or the current barber shop that's open.
Yeah, to Andrew's point where we don't wanna impede on the residential tenants in the area. So if we're not separating them, then we're moving it over into the same category. How do we differentiate when we're gonna try to tell certain businesses you have to do this?
You have the dairy queen open till ten o'clock, and you're telling the new cafe they can't stay open, that's.
Correct, that's what I'm.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I think it just needs to be more defined, it's that, that mixed use, so that you don't have, I'm just afraid that if you just, you know, brush that off now and say, we'll get to that later.
Right.
And then next month I got the tea room coming back saying, well, now you have mixed use, but I still don't know where I fall in this, because I'm still not office.
Right, and you're gonna let this person stay open and I gotta close at this time.
So I guess that would be a, I think we need to define very, that, like that list that she's got on there of, these are the things that we would be allowable.
So maybe we should.
It doesn't get enforced until.
Well, maybe that, that's where that's some committee that comes in is our, right? Where you can have that discussion of what do we wanna include in that, what.
Are you ready to talk?
Did I, did I here make a motion to table down there?
I, I will take back my original motion. And can we make a motion to form a subcommittee?
Um, I was just gonna say, whatever changes we decide to do, whether we're just, you know, may, just changing the title of the district to office and mixed use or anything, anything we make changes to the zoning ordinance, it's gonna have to go before a public hearing. So I'd say, I mean, we're not, this is probably gonna take, this is gonna be a several month long discussion, figuring out what we wanna do. So like, you know, feel free if, to table stuff or whatever, but, you know, we're, we are gonna have to go through each, each section and kind of figure out what do we wanna add in, what do we not? Because we don't wanna constantly have to be like, oh, we need to revise this district over and over again. Keep holding public hearings, so, I mean, I've, I've worked, sometimes this stuff takes six months, takes a year. So, you know, whatever we do, we wanna be careful about it, cause we are a change, we're modifying a whole district, so.
Sounds good.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we form subcommittee, how many people do we want? Four people, let's start with, uh, to investigate this and kind of firm it up, so that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not it.
Okay, okay, now, who wants to be on that subcommittee? I'll show up, cause.
I'll be on it.
Lisa.
There's three, four, boom, done.
Okay.
Oh. That would be five.
Okay, all right, so, and then we'll decide when we're gonna meet.
It's Bill and Stegner.
Yes.
Lisa.
Me. I mean.
That's it.
For me?
Yeah.
Will you be able, yes, okay, we'll decide. I'll get together with Cindy and we'll decide when, when we can meet. You guys open evenings, I guess?
At least four days a week.
Lisa said not Tuesdays.
Not Tuesday.
Not Tuesdays.
Okay, who, who's on this thing again now?
Depends when, I can make it happen usually.
All right.
Two, three, four.
Okay, but evenings are good for everybody. All right, okay.
And if you'd like to meet here, that would be fine, I can make sure that it's set up for you or open.
Okay, all right. And I'll call you early next week and.
Okay.
Couldn't we meet at the office and have a, nevermind.
The office. That's why I was calling you.
Hey, I'll laugh. All right, next item of business, I guess we're done with that, is the accessory building question in R one district.
Right, so at the last meeting, um, in the R one district, um, you guys wanted to address and maybe modify some of the language that applies to accessory buildings, particularly item number five. Dwelling units with attached garages may be allowed not more than one detached accessory building not to exceed two hundred and fifty square feet in total area. Dwelling units without an attached garage may be allowed not more than one detached accessory building not to exceed seven hundred and ninety square feet in total area. Um, this language is problematic because earlier in the ordinance, it is, in item number four, not more than one attached or detached accessory building shall be permitted for each lot excluding garages, either attached or detached. So that's conflicting with item number five. There shouldn't really be a differentiation between attached and detached garages.
What does the phrase total area mean?
For, for the accessory building, it's total area.
If we're talking about, and there've been several carriage barns built in the village that are architecturally appropriate and characteristic of the, uh, property that they're erected on, these things commonly would be, oh, eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred, two thousand square feet, because they're two-story buildings. Are we really realistically saying total ground square area or toe?
Total, total ground square area.
Then we need to add the words ground, ground impact area or something there so that we understand that if someone's building a story and a half or a two-story carriage barn, that that upper area is not being, is not being counted. I mean, you, you, you can't build a, a carriage barn.
Right.
Um, and there's, I don't know, three or four of them have been built in the last several years. And they're, they're, they're big things, you know, cause they're two stories or story and a half, that's all.
Thank you.
Is footprint appropriate language?
Yeah, footprint, yeah.
Okay, just, just so that we understand that we're only talking about the first floor.
Right, okay, good to know. Um, so then, uh, the suggested language, language provided, it's at the bottom. Two suggestions, in no instance shall the square footage of an accessory building combined with the square footage of the principal building and garage, either attached or detached, exceed thirty-five percent of the maximum lot coverage. Or you, dwelling units with garages attached or detached may be allowed one detached accessory building not to exceed two hundred and eighty square feet in total area. Dwelling units without a garage may be allowed one detached accessory building not to exceed a thousand square feet in total area.
We need to add the words. We just need to change that.
Footprint or, yeah.
So we would only use one or the other?
Well, all right, I mean, these are suggestions, we modify the language or, but.
Is it gonna be footprint including overheads?
No. That's not fun, that's, that's hard.
What is the reasoning, and I've seen it in our ordinances currently and other ordinances, thirty-five percent, where does?
That's, um, that's state.
That's the, from the state, okay.
Well, thirty-five percent, that would cover.
That would cover.
Just cover the whole ordinance.
Um, and just so you know, this is just for accessory buildings in R one district, will not apply to the RM district or any other district. There are currently no standards for accessory buildings in the RM district.
In the office district or the?
The RM.
Yes, but what about the office or the?
Um, I, I have to double check. And typically, uh, for languages, regulating the use of something, um, it typically is best planning practice to have it in a specific section in the ordinance as opposed to under permitted or special land uses, just something to think about. Like supplementary, like regulations or whatever.
So the, the first suggested language is that you can have a, your house, a detached garage and an accessory building, as long as you're not over thirty-five percent.
Correct.
Now, can you have your house, an attached garage, a detached garage and an accessory building?
You're only allowed one, one accessory building.
No more than one attached or detached garage or accessory building shall be permitted, is number four.
No more than one.
So then that would have to change then also, wouldn't it, that's four?
What you're saying is they're, they're contradictory.
Oh, no, five.
Five and four are contradict, are contradicting each other right now.
So four would have to go then also or change?
No, we could keep four, so basically you can have, you can have your house, garage and accessory building. How, the garage can be detached or attached, either way.
This doesn't apply to me, because I'm not in that, I'm not even in that district, I just wondered.
You're on one.
I'm in the office district.
Wow.
I'm in that.
We're gonna have to do that next.
Yeah, that's next. So.
We'll fix it.
Like you're, Justin or like the house next to you, either of you. You would have to get a special land use then to put up an appropriate, uh, architecturally appropriate carriage barn, which would be architecturally appropriate, those houses.
Accessory building.
At some point or another, those houses had a carriage barn.
Yeah.
And if there's nobody, that's just the way life really was.
Yeah.
Mr. Parker lives in a historic home from the eighteen something or another, there's no, there's no possible way that house was ever built without a carriage barn with it.
Burnt down in nineteen seventeen, on the records. I, I do like the, the first suggested, myself.
As do I, just replacing the square footage part of it, right, or no, because.
Nope, it stays.
It stays then.
The thirty-five percent that allows you to do whatever size you need.
Right.
I guess you, no, you don't want to say square footage, you want to say footprint, because you're not talking square footage, because you've got a two-story housing, a two-story accessory building, that square footage is gonna add up to more than.
Right.
Your footprint.
Hmm.
Correct?
Yeah, I'll, you know, I'll look and see what the, the proper terms for all this are typically used in the zoning ordinance to cover all those.
Okay.
But, um, what I can do is I can, um, whatever is decided, I can come back with a, um, um, a second, a, a second draft is how it would be in the ordinance if it was adopted. Um, so I can come back with a revised draft on what we, we could be looking at.
Thirty-five percent of maximum lot coverage, so it says it there, maybe not.
So, what is the feeling on this? Do you favor the first language or the second language?
I favor the first with the, the proposed changes she was just mentioning.
Yeah, with it, he just said, with it saying thirty-five percent of lot coverage, could they just build?
But then still, then there's zoning, it says you have maximum two stories.
But the maximum in the house, right? You can't be telling her in the house for sure, right?
There is a height listed in the.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. It's not saying you can't have a ten by ten box with a thirty by thirty box on top of it.
Right.
So, do, so, we, so, the, the first language, the first paragraph is favored, so, do we want to table further discussion on this until you rewrite it and then we'll move it forward at that point?
It's probably for the best.
Okay.
Just so we vote on the actual language.
So, that's, I make that as a motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that does it. I ask for unanimous approval to adjourn, everybody? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, just at the council meeting, I know the planning had pushed, or not pushed, suggested the rezoning of the Church Street property.
Uh-huh.
Council was somewhat, some council members decided to vote on it before legal recommendation with the joining of the property, so the vote did happen on Monday and it was denied.
I got a thing from Zach, so.
Okay.
And listening back to my discussion about, you, you're going to a heavy-duty commercial use.
Yeah.
In any other community that I've ever worked in, you would be required to put up.
A wall. A wall around that?
Walls and, and all types of things.
Lighting.
Before you get, if, when you do a rezoning like that, if, if you, if you wanted to get going right now, then you'd bond two hundred percent of whatever your contractor call, says it's gonna cost. So, if it's, you know, forty thousand dollars to put up the brick wall, then you gotta put up an eighty thousand dollar cash bond, I mean, that's, that's perfectly reasonable. If we're talking about the fact that they're going to a, a, a commercial zoning, and that's what they're really talking about. At this point, there, there should be the limitations, the enforcement of what are standard, any other community requirements.
I guess my question is, how many screening walls does this community have?
Okay, that's fair.
I'm, I'm just saying, I, I, I truly think there isn't any.
Uh, I think there actually is a little tiny one next to the Dairy Queen, but you have to go back there.
There is, it's wood.
Yeah, but that's, in that, that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Given time, place, and circumstance.
Right.
So, I guess.
But still, there's, there's, there's three for a couple thousand feet of commercial frontage.
My question then would be, being that it was brought to a vote at the council level and now denied, does that now have to come back to planning and another public hearing for any additional rezoning request? Being that the initial has been denied.
I mean, I.
What?
I wasn't on the board at that time, but the request was for them to do a combine, correct?
Combine, well, it was planning, recommended rezoning based or contingent on combining the parcels, if I'm, if I'm wording it correctly.
Correct.
That's already at the county level, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, which.
Usually takes a long.
Legal at village council suggested that we wait for that combination to happen before we make a vote for rezoning. Two members on the council called a motion for the vote and it was denied. Instead of tabling it, it was denied, so my understanding, then we'd still, now we'd have to reopen public hearing and go through that whole process again.
The recommendation from this board was to go ahead with the rezoning. They voted for the rezoning, if, if and when it was all, all four of those parcels were combined.
But that rezoning was just denied Monday.
Well, it was denied until they have their.
Until the county approves.
Motion was to rezone the property into the central business district.
Until they have their combination.
It can be brought up on a reconsideration.
Completed.
Yeah, it was, it was never, it was not, the motion wasn't that way though, if I'm correct.
There, there are very few times a county would deny a combine, and there are very specific reasons.
I'm not denying that, I'm saying, it, it should have been tabled and waited until it happened, like, legal recommended.
The way I interpret it is the, uh, we made a motion, um, what month are we in, so January, to wait to approve until they were combined. The owners were hoping to be able to be approved while in process. We denied, um, last, or, geez, what week are we in? We denied on Monday to do this approval before the combination happened. So, we didn't completely deny it, we just denied to do it before we received all the documents. So, they still have the opportunity to turn it all in and combine it and then come to us once done.
I would, I would question the motion made by trustee Edwards, seconded by Bartholomew, to grant the rezoning.
I'd have to go back and listen to it.
That's.
That's not the way I interpreted it.
Maybe that's a question for Mr. Clark.
Yeah.
I think he was opposed to that.
But if they weren't promising.
He was opposed to approving it pending, yes. He was, um, all for our choice, once it was all, once it's combined.
Well, at this level, it was contingent on the combination. It was approved, you know, until county.
It was approved and sent up to the board of trustees.
Right.
Yeah.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon.
And at the first meeting, nothing had been started yet, so they, uh, the decision was, well, get going and then come back to us. And they're like, okay, we're in the process, can we be approved now? No, we still need to finish and then come back.
I guess my, I guess I have one question, if, I, I wasn't on the board at that time, but if the board, this board, said contingent upon approval, it can go up. How did it go up before that happened?
How did what go up?
How did the, how did it go in front of the board without being done? The contingency wasn't met, how did that happen?
The owners requested it be added to the agenda.
There you go.
It was added, motion made to approve the rezoning, that motion was denied. So, I'm just, to prevent further hiccups, if they come back next month and want to be on the trustee, with the board of trustees, we want to ask for this rezoning now that we've got our paperwork. I think they might need to be notified that you probably had to come before planning and a public hearing again, and we might want to check with Mark or our legal counsel on that.
I don't know, because last time we asked about the, having to redo the public hearing, um, regarding the Lions vacating, he said we had already stated it in the public hearing.
It was tabled, not, not denied.
Right, I don't know, it's gonna have to be a question.
Yeah, actually tabled twice.
Right.
And then, can I just ask a question, because I, you know, was not part of that, so those conversations previously is, once they do that and those lots are combined and it gets rezoned and we get to that point, then, do they have to come to this board to say, now, this is what we want to do with this property? Is that?
Yeah, there still needs to be all the proper approvals, permits, um, same as this, your site plans.
Do we even know what their intentions are, what they're going to do with the property?
They did state it in some of the, um, materials.
So, event center or?
They're planning an event space.
Event space.
Wedding showers, funerals.
Yeah, anything in any type of building.
Speaking to Bill's point, all right, so when they come back to us, they should come back to us with a complete site plan, showing us everything they intend to do. Signage, lighting, parking.
Checklist of what you need to show, yes.
Uh, with the lanes, parking spaces, it, it should come back here with everything on it.
Was there a pre-planning of this?
What's that?
Was there a pre-planning meeting on this property?
There's nothing to plan yet, we did have a meeting, but there's nothing to plan yet, because it wasn't in the proper zone, so we said, first step is.
That was the first thing, was that they needed to.
First step.
So, you're suggesting they get a legal opinion before they may have to come back here?
I mean, I, I don't know, if we need to ask Mark, I would just, if, if we need to recommend them, if they ask to be had, added to next month's council, village council.
Generally, what happens is, so take the park, for instance. If they would have came initially with all these drawings and you all said, no, we don't want this at all, they just spent all that money for engineered drawings. So, that's where these renderings at a lesser level come in, go ahead.
So, like, my, I mean, I don't want to call it a workaround, but like, my angle on it is that this.
That's done all the time. Basically, the reasoning behind is that they've set their paper record, then if they choose to attack afterwards on a legal basis, it's all there. That's the reason you have all those drawings and, and we have roll call votes, so that the, the paper channel is, is right there for someone to look at. Now, the, the question, and I was, Lisa brought it up, and she says, no, they've got to come back before us. I'm, are, are we positive of that?
Yes, you have to.
Okay, I, I didn't know.
Yes, for, so they came in for a rezoning. If they want to change the use and they want to create something different.
Right now, they've, they've got a vacant church.
They've got a vacant church.
That's all it is, period.
They got a vacant church.
And, and, okay, so now you can do something else there, you've got to go back to the planning commission with the A to Z, this is what we want to do.
But they should meet before they do their drawings, I mean, now they're gonna have, now they're gonna have their survey. So, now they've got the, the base, the base of their, of their site plan. So, then they should meet with Karen and see.
That's the way it happens all the time.
What do we, what do we need to do, you know, do we need this, do we need this, they need, with the engineer, do I need, do I need screening, do I need, what do I need for parking? What about drainage, curb and gutter?
This is assuming they get a CBD.
That's assuming they get a CBD's rezoning.
I would question then also, if they did CBD, we gotta, we're gonna look at the setbacks that fall into the CBD. While the current owners might be saying, hey, we're gonna maintain this building as is, zoning stays with that property. And if it sells in ten years and someone else says, well, I got CBD zoning, that's property line to property line on the road sides, because it doesn't butt up a residential, residential, I think it's fifteen foot from any residential. So, you could, they, they could build three-story structures all the way up to that sidewalk.
They can only build what the planning commission allows them to build.
But it, but we gave them CBD zoning, which they'd have a pretty strong argument to say, hey, I'm in CBD, every other business in the CBD down Main Street is built right to the park sidewalk.
But going back to the original question, to me, the motion made by this board was contingent upon combination. This board approves it to the executive board of this village. Those conditions weren't met, so to me, our will hasn't been met yet, so I don't see why they have to come back here. That's me, because the conditions of the board for it to even be heard, so the reason it was heard is they requested it be heard, not because we did, because we did not yet. So, if it's.
They were hopeful that they could.
That it could jump the process, and I get that, they're a business, they're trying to operate.
Because they. Yeah.
But the conditions of this board haven't been met yet, so I don't feel like it was put on the agenda because the planning commission approved it, it was because they asked for it. So, I don't think that this part of it has been stopped.
Not saying you're, you're correct either way, but I have a meeting with Mark Clark to run a bunch of things, buy him tomorrow, and I can add this to the list, just to verify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're also working on that building, does anyone know if they got, I mean, they're doing construction there. Anyone stopped in to see if they got permits or anything?
That's been addressed.
Has it been addressed?
Yes.
Okay.
There's many still.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Did you do anything?
No, I'm not, actually.
Did you ask for a motion to adjourn?
He, he asked for.
I asked for a unanimous motion to adjourn and everybody would, and then it started off.
Can we talk about? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Say. On favor?
Aye.
It's the first time we've ever.